Good afternoon, everybody, and welcome to the regular session of the Orange County Legislature dated Thursday, March 3, 2020. I would ask that we call to order the meeting. And at this point, I would also remind all of you that are present to please silence any cell phones or electronic devices you may have. And I would ask everyone to stand for a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. And please remember Pat Gilchrist, the former president of the Orange County Citizens Foundation, who recently passed away. And we also continue to keep in our thoughts and prayers the lives of all the innocent Ukrainians who face the vile evil in their homeland. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. At this time, I would ask the clerk to read the roll, please. Fagion?
Here. Here.
Amo?
Here.
Anagnostakis?
Present.
Benton?
Here.
Resha?
Here.
Cheney?
Here.
Ellers?
Here.
Hines?
Here.
Luhan?
Present.
Menuda?
Here.
O'Donnell?
Here.
Ramos?
Present.
Riskevich?
Here.
Sassi?
Here.
Sierra?
Stiganga?
Here. Sutherland?
Here.
Totell?
Here.
Tui?
Here.
Benelli?
Present.
Twenty present, one absent. Thank you. We do have some proclamations this afternoon, so at this time, I would ask our Director of Office for the Aging and our, I believe, Deputy County Executive Harry Poor to join me and legislator Sutherland for three proclamations. The 2020 Age Friendly Orange County, the Older Americans Act Nutrition Program, 50th, it's the 50th anniversary, and we recognize March as Nutrition Awareness Month. All right, I'm going to defer to the Deputy County Executive, and you can pick which one goes first.
All right. I'll borrow your microphone.
Yes.
The first one is 2022 Age Friendly Orange County, and I'll ask our Director of Aging to explain this.
Thank you so much. So, Orange County applied for a grant, and it's a three-pronged grant making Orange County age-friendly. All throughout the country, people are doing this, and we received the first grant, which is to designate Orange County as age-friendly. The second part of it is to really reenact it. So what we're going to be doing, or enact it, and what we're going to be doing is we're going to do three pilot places. We're going to do the city of Newburgh, the village of Montgomery, and the town of Warwick. And we're specifically going to make them age-friendly. We're going to talk to the officials there to maintain the sidewalks, better lighting, maybe when you cross the street, it's going to be instead of 12 seconds, it'll be 20 seconds. We're going to have some blue lights, similar to like when you're at college and you're walking around. Just everything to make everyone age-friendly. And as we all know, we're all aging, so it's not just people over 60, it's everybody. Every day, 12,000 people turn 60. So our country is aging, and we have to take care of everybody, and Orange County takes it very seriously. This proclamation speaks volumes, so I want to thank the legislature and county exec for doing this. Thank you.
Thank you, Anne Marie. And I turned 60 10 years ago, and it was quite disturbing, and I had to look for something that would make me ease my mind, so I finally discovered that no matter how long I live or around, I know I'll always be five months younger than Jimmy O'Donnell.
I can't beat that.
You forgot to pray to God.
There you go, yes.
Sorry about that.
I just really want to thank Anne Marie and her staff for being able to do all of the wonderful things that she does for those of us there, senior citizens, I'm kind of, I guess, this side of the little group here.
I can be here too.
Oh, you're moving too, okay. So I just really wanted to thank you. You've done a remarkable job. I've known that since you've taken that position many, many years ago, I've had the pleasure of working with you. And, you know, and this is for all the proclamations that you brought this afternoon. It's just really remarkable, all the work that you and your staff have done, and I'm very grateful for that, especially as I'm aging as well.
Thank you so much.
And then which one do we have next?
Well, I don't know if we should do both of these at the same time, they're very similar.
Yeah.
First one is National Nutrition Month, and the second is, in similar vein, the Older Americans Act Nutrition Program 50th Anniversary. Take it away.
Thank you, yes. And these go really hand in hand. We recognize March as Nutrition Month every year. It is the one thing, our dining program, which is now 50 years old, that keeps people living independently at home. One in seven older adults have food insecurity, and as the population grows and we age, that's going to become even more. And in 1972, through the Older Americans Act, they started a dining program. We only have records back to 1990, so we tried to figure it out, but well over 5 million meals were served. That continues to grow. We had, we had 100% increase in people coming on the program during the pandemic, and we probably have about 50% that remained on there. So we know that there's a need, we're really grateful for this program, and it's not just a nutrition program. We're the eyes and the ears of the family. We help with socialization and isolation, and we now know that isolation is a physical illness. If you're isolated and lonely, it's like smoking 15 cigarettes a day. So you have that one friendly person that, by the way, is bringing a meal to you that may be your only meal that you have. It makes a difference in people's lives. So again, I want to thank the county exec's office, I want to thank the legislature for your support of this program, because whenever I come anywhere, you are more than willing to help us, so thank you very much.
This is a program that was very near and dear to my heart. As a town supervisor in the town of Blooming Grove, our Meals on Wheels program was absolutely phenomenal. And as Anne Marie said, sometimes these individuals that are delivering meals to some of our seniors, it's the only person they actually get to see. And it's really quite sad, but it really does make a huge difference in their lives. So it's not just in regard to the meal that they're delivering, but it's the friendly face that they get to see and have a conversation with somebody. So it's a phenomenal program, and obviously, it's grown, and it's made better every single year for the efforts of Anne Marie and her staff. And at this point, I'd like to have our Chair of Human Services say a few words, Janet Sutherland.
Thank you, Chairwoman. I just wanted to commend you and your office. You guys never skipped a beat the entire pandemic, making sure that everybody got what they needed. And obviously, just to piggyback, you know, for so many that were isolated that entire time, you were their lifeline, you know, you're volunteers, which I think is tremendous. I mean, getting people to volunteer their time, their energy during the pandemic, putting themselves at risk, you know, delivering these meals to make sure that people got them. Truly, you guys were rock stars, and we just can't thank you enough, so job well done.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Okay. Thank you, Anne Marie, and we'll now ask Mr. Fagion to come on up.
Thank you. We have a very special presentation this afternoon, because we have a superstar in our midst, and that superstar seems to come from the city of Port Jervis. She is a student in the middle school in Port Jervis, but at a very young age, she's become a very outstanding athlete, and I'm going to turn it over to her legislator to be able to present this recognition to her for all of the good work she's done and the bright future she has ahead of you. Charlie Wiley.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Harry. Charlie, come on up, bring up your folks, your sister, and your granddad. Today is a very special day here in Orange County. We are glad, first of all, it's the first time, and we talked about it, Charlie, before the meeting started, it's the first time all 21 legislators have been back together in this room as a legislative body. And you know what? They're here because we have a lot of business to do, but they're here because they're going to celebrate you just as much as me and Katie and Harry are going to celebrate you. The first item on our agenda today is a resolution celebrating March as Women's History Month. That's a pretty big deal. Women have contributed to our society in many great ways for centuries, and you, you have set women's history here in Orange County. Just to let everybody know, Charlie is in eighth grade, and this year, she became the first female in the history of Section 9 wrestling to win a Section 9 wrestling championship. Now, that deserves a round of applause. Keep those hands nice and warm, because not only did Charlie win a Section 9 championship, she beat all the boys and won the boys' championship, so a big round of applause for Charlie. Now, I promised I wouldn't put too many questions on you, but the one question I have, what was your overall record this year?
33 and 6.
33 and 6. Charlie's here with her dad, her mom, her granddad, and her sister, and it's my pleasure to present you with this certificate signed by the Chairwoman of the Legislature and myself, celebrating your championship. The Deputy County Executive has her certificate as well for your accomplishments. She's only in eighth grade, so get ready and get used to hearing the name Charlie Wiley. She's a superstar today, and her future is very bright. Congratulations.
Be proud for many reasons. What you've accomplished is very important and noteworthy, but what you've also done is you set yourself as an example for people like your little sister. So congratulations for many things. And I just want to say, I spoke with Charlie prior to this event this afternoon, and I told her that being on the wrestling team is a very good way of starting a life in politics. Congratulations to you.
Thank you very much. Charlie, did you want to say anything? And congratulations to your family as well. You must be very, very proud parents, and you're going to have a lot of adventures ahead of you, I'm sure.
Let's get a nice picture. Come on, bring it in.
Thank you.
Congratulations again.
Thank you, Meghan. Charlie, I'm so proud of you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for having me. Thank you for seeing me. Thank you. Charlie has to go wrestle.
As far as public participation, we do not have anybody that's signed up for public participation, so I'm going to move right along on the agenda and recognize Majority Leader Fagion.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move to vote collectively on Agenda Items Number 10 through 24.
If there are no objections, these items will be voted on collectively. Again, Majority Leader Fagion.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I also move to approve the minutes of November 4, 2021.
Second? All in favor? Motion is carried. And we will start the agenda with Letter A. Department of Finance, Orange County General Fund Financial Statement, unaudited for fiscal year ended December 31, 2021. Receive and file. Number one, this is, oh, I'm sorry. Okay. A resolution recognizing March as Women's History Month. This is going to be a roll call vote, but before I have any, I would like to have our newest female legislator, Genesis Ramos, read the entire resolution. Enter the record.
Thank you, Chairwoman. Resolution recognizing March as Women's History Month. Whereas Women's History Month recognizes and spreads awareness of the importance of women in the history of our nation, state, and county, and whereas throughout the history of the United States, whether in their homes, in their workplaces, in schools, in the courts, or during wartime, women have fought for themselves, their families, and all people of the United States. And whereas women have played a unique role throughout our nation's history by providing the majority of the volunteer labor force, and whereas even in the early days of the history of the United States, women were particularly important in the establishment of early charitable, philanthropic, and cultural institutions, and whereas women of every race, class, and ethnic background led the efforts to secure suffrage and equal opportunities for women, and also served in the abolitionist movement, the emancipation movement, labor movements, civil rights movements, and other causes to create a more fair and just society for all. And whereas women have been and continue to be leaders in the forefront of the law, business, science, government, math, art, literature, music, film, athletics, and other fields, and whereas since the American Revolution, women have been vital to the mission of the armed forces and have served our country courageously, with more than 200,000 women serving on active duty, and 2 million women veterans representing every branch of service, and whereas more than 10 million women own businesses in the United States, and whereas President Jimmy Carter recognized March 2 through 1980 as National Women's History Week, and whereas in 1987, President Ronald Reagan issued a presidential proclamation proclaiming March 1987 as Women's History Month, and whereas despite these contributions, the role of American women in history has been consistently overlooked and undervalued in the literature, teaching, and study of American history, and whereas much remains to be done to ensure that women realize their full potential as equal members of society, and now therefore be it resolved that the Orange County Legislature recognizes March as Women's History Month for Orange County, and we commend these sentiments to every citizen of Orange County that all might reflect upon the contributions of women in the United States.
Thank you, Legislator Ramos. Okay, are there any questions or comments? I would ask that. I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I didn't see. Please feel free to leave your questions.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Please have me as the sponsor.
In the future, please notify the clerk ahead of time, all right? Thank you. Anything else? Ms. Totell?
Yes, Madam Chair, we're all Dems, I believe, are supposed to be on that.
That was handled by your, by your.
Yeah, okay, because otherwise, usually we say it, wasn't it? Thank you, just wanted to make sure.
Okay. May I ask you, please call the roll. Fagion?
Yes.
Paduk?
Yes.
Amo?
Yes.
Anagnostakis? Benton? Resha? Cheney? Ellers?
Yes.
Luhan?
Aye.
Menuda? O'Donnell? Ramos? Riskevich? Sassi? Stiganga? Sutherland? Totell? Tui? Benelli? Twenty ayes. Thank you. Two A. Receive and file. Number two. Legislators Amo and Fagion, Local Law Introductory Number One of 2022, A Local Law to amend Local Law Eight of 1968, commonly known as the Orange County Charter, to provide for the creation of an Office of Asylum Counsel.
Second.
Questions? Comments? I'm going to also remind everybody that memos were sent out as far as sponsorships, so that should be handled ahead of time, and I believe your party leader will handle that as we move forward. Thank you. Any other questions? Roll call, please. Fagion?
Yes.
Paduk?
Yes.
Amo?
Yes.
Anagnostakis? Benton? Resha? Cheney? Ellers? Hines? Luhan? Menuda? O'Donnell? Ramos? Riskevich? Sassi? Stiganga? Sutherland? Totell? Tui? Benelli? Twenty ayes. Number three, please. Legislators Stiganga, Hines, Fagion, Sassi, with all Republicans as cosponsors. Resolution pursuant to Article Nine of the Constitution of the State of New York requesting amendments to the judiciary law in relation to the appointment of grand jury stenographers in Orange County.
Second.
Questions? Comments? Please call the roll. Fagion?
Yes.
Paduk?
Yes.
Amo?
Yes.
Anagnostakis? Benton? Resha? Cheney? Ellers? Hines? Luhan? Menuda? O'Donnell? Ramos? Riskevich? Sassi? Stiganga? Sutherland? Totell? Tui? Benelli? Twenty ayes. Thank you. Number four. Legislators Fagion and Sassi, with all Republicans, Legislator Paduk and Sierra as cosponsors. Resolution confirming the reappointments by the County Executive to the Orange County Police Advisory Board pursuant to Section 18.07A of the Orange County Charter.
Second.
Questions? Comments? Minority Leader Paduk?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Just, this is a general question. We usually have our screen down, and don't we usually post these? So I mean, when we're reading our resolutions off, the people at home watching, they can't, I mean, they could see the whole resolution if we had it up there, and I thought we used to have.
That's something that's being worked on.
It is.
We did have meetings with IT today as well.
Okay, because it'd be important, I think, for everybody to see what we're talking about. Thank you.
I agree.
Thank you.
Anything else? And please call the roll. Fagion?
Yes.
Paduk?
Yes.
Amo?
Yes.
Anagnostakis? Benton? Resha? Cheney? Ellers? Hines? Luhan? Menuda? O'Donnell? Ramos? Riskevich? Sassi? Stiganga? Sutherland? Totell? Tui? Benelli? Twenty ayes. Number five, which is a two-thirds vote. Legislators Fagion, Sassi, Benton, Cheney, Paduk, with legislators Stiganga and Sierra as cosponsors. Bond Resolution dated March 3, 2022, Bond Resolution of the County of Orange, New York, authorizing, one, the preparation of surveys, preliminary and detailed plans, specification and estimates necessary for the reconstruction of the Emergency Communications Center at the estimated cost of $1,795,000, and two, the upgrade of the emergency phone system at the estimated cost of $1 million, stating the estimated total cost thereof is $2,795, appropriating said amount, therefore, and authorizing the issuance of $2,795,000 bonds of the county to finance said appropriation.
Second.
Questions? Comments? Right, please call the roll. Fagion?
Yes.
Paduk?
Yes.
Amo? Anagnostakis? Benton? Resha? Cheney? Ellers? Hines? Luhan? Menuda? O'Donnell? Ramos? Riskevich? Sassi? Stiganga? Sutherland? Totell? Tui? Benelli? Twenty ayes. Number six, which is also a two-thirds vote. Legislators Ramos, Fagion, Benton, and Totell, Bond Resolution dated March 3, 2022, Bond Resolution of the County of Orange, New York, authorizing the construction of parking area improvements at the Sheriff's Office, stating the estimated maximum cost thereof is $600,000, appropriating said amount, therefore, and authorizing the issuance of $600,000 bonds of the county to finance said appropriation.
Second.
Questions? Comments? Right, would you please call the roll. Fagion?
Yes.
Paduk?
Yes.
Amo?
Yes.
Anagnostakis? Benton? Resha? Cheney? Ellers? Hines? Luhan? Menuda? O'Donnell? Ramos? Riskevich? Sassi? Stiganga? Sutherland? Totell? Tui? Benelli? Twenty ayes. Thank you. Number seven, here again, this is a two-thirds vote. Legislators Hines, Stiganga, Ellers, Fagion, Sassi, Ramos, Benton, with all Democrats and all Republicans as cosponsors. Bond Resolution dated March 3, 2022, Bond Resolution of the County of Orange, New York, authorizing the acquisition of Axon Laser and Body Cams for the Sheriff's Office, stating the estimated total cost thereof is $725,000, appropriating said amount, therefore, and authorizing the issuance of $725,000 bonds of the county to finance said appropriation.
Second.
Questions? Comments? Legislator Benton?
Thank you, Madam Chair. At the Ways and Means Committee where this was discussed, there were some questions, and everyone should have received a copy of the letter that I received from our county attorney, Langdon Chapman, explaining the procedure that was taken and how this was a purchase, will be a purchase, through a cooperative agreement permitted by state law. The second question was who was going to be sharing and useful of, using this system, and it was pointed out to me that the district attorney's office will also be using this. And the big question was how much we are being given credit for, for the used tasers that are being turned in for the new ones, and Mr. Burpo got me that number today, it's $61,350.
Thank you, Legislator Benton, for the additional information. It was very helpful. Any other questions or comments? Roll call, please. Fagion?
Yes.
Paduk?
Yes.
Amo?
Yes.
Anagnostakis? Benton? Resha? Cheney? Ellers? Hines? Luhan? Menuda? O'Donnell? Ramos? Riskevich? Sassi? Stiganga? Sutherland? Totell? Tui? Benelli? Twenty ayes. Number eight. Legislators Hines, Stiganga, Ellers, Fagion, Sassi, Ramos, Benton, with all Democrats as cosponsors. Bond Resolution dated March 3, 2022, Bond Resolution of the County of Orange, New York, authorizing the acquisition of body cams and tasers for the probation department, stating the estimated total cost thereof is $166,000, appropriating said amount, therefore, and authorizing the issuance of $166,000 bonds of the county to finance said appropriation.
Second.
Questions or comments? And here again, this is a two-thirds vote. Okay, please call the roll. Fagion?
Yes.
Paduk?
Yes.
Amo? Amo?
Yes.
Anagnostakis? Benton? Breschah? Cheney? Ellers? Hines? Luhan? Menuda? O'Donnell? Ramos? Riskevich? Sassi? Stiganga? Sutherland? Totell? Tui? Benelli? 20 ayes. Number nine. Legislators Benton and Breschah, legislators Stiganga as a cosponsor. Bond Resolution dated March 3, 2022. Bond Resolution of the County of Orange, New York authorizing the acquisition of computer hardware and software for the Department of General Services in connection with the separation of the county network from the E-911 and police network, stating the estimated maximum cost thereof is $850,000. Appropriating said amount therefore and authorizing the issuance of $850,000 bonds of the county to finance said appropriation.
Second.
Questions? Comments? Here again, this is a two-thirds vote as well. Please call the roll. Fagion?
Yes.
Paduk?
Yes.
Amo?
Yes.
Anagnostakis? Benton? Breschah? Cheney? Ellers? Hines? Luhan? Menuda? O'Donnell? Ramos? Riskevich? Sassi? Stiganga? Sutherland? Totell? Tui? Benelli? 20 ayes. The following are going to be a roll call, and it's voting collectively on Items Number 10 through 24. These are text resolutions. Any questions or comments? All right, I want to call the roll, Chief. Fagion?
Yes.
Paduk?
Yes.
Amo?
Yes.
Anagnostakis? Benton? Breschah? Cheney? Ellers? Hines? Luhan? Menuda? O'Donnell? Ramos? Riskevich? Sassi? Stiganga? Sutherland? Totell? Tui? Benelli? 20 ayes. Number 25. Legislators Luhan and Amo with legislators Stiganga and all Democrats as cosponsors. Resolution making a supplemental appropriation to the 2022 Orange County budget for the Orange County Department of Social Services pursuant to Section 4.09 of the Orange County Charter.
Second.
Questions or comments? And I would ask the roll to be called, please. Fagion?
Yes.
Paduk?
Yes.
Amo?
Yes.
Anagnostakis? Benton? Breschah? Cheney? Ellers? Hines? Luhan? Menuda? O'Donnell? Ramos? Riskevich? Sassi? Stiganga? Sutherland? Totell? Tui? Benelli? 20 ayes. Number 26. Legislators Fagion, Breschah, Luhan, and Amo, an act amending the appropriate Orange County employment schedules to create four Public Health Fellows II at the Orange County Department of Health pursuant to Section 2.02I of the Orange County Charter.
Second.
Questions or comments? And I would ask the roll to be called. Fagion?
Yes.
Paduk?
Yes.
Amo?
Yes.
Anagnostakis? Benton? Breschah? Cheney? Ellers? Hines? Luhan? Menuda? O'Donnell? Ramos? Riskevich? Sassi? Stiganga? Sutherland? Totell? Tui? Benelli? 20 ayes. I believe, any questions or comments? At this point? Oh, number 27, I'm sorry. Legislators Fagion, Paduk, and Amo, an act amending the appropriate Orange County employment schedules to create one biostatistician at the Orange County Department of Health pursuant to Section 2.02I of the Orange County Charter.
Second.
Questions or comments? And I would ask the roll to be called. Fagion?
Yes.
Paduk?
Yes.
Amo?
Yes.
Anagnostakis? Benton? Breschah? Cheney? Ellers? Hines? Luhan? Menuda? O'Donnell? Ramos? Riskevich? Sassi? Stiganga? Sutherland? Totell? Tui? Benelli? 20 ayes. Madam Chairwoman, and the desk is clear. Thank you very much. I, we confirm, I don't believe there's any public participation after the meeting. All right, so that is correct. And before I take a motion to adjourn, I just wanted to take a moment to welcome you all back. This is the first in-person meeting of the new class of the Orange County Legislature. This is the first time we're all meeting together. We started January off, unfortunately, with virtual meetings, so it's nice to see everybody's smiling faces back here in the chambers, and look forward to staying here as we move through 2022. So, welcome back, everybody. Thank you. Motion to adjourn.
No movement.
Smile, Mike.